Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting this evening, and I am going to call the meeting to order. And we're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Green.
Okay, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll all rise, and that will be led by Deputy Mayor Franklin, and that will be followed by our invocation with Bill Record of the Coannis Club of Sunrise Vista.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
...for tonight's meeting. Lord, may we thank you for our many freedoms and blessings. Ask for your continued guidance, mercy, and protection, and may I ask for a spirit of wisdom and understanding in the council's decisions to allow our community to live together in unity, and may this city be a light upon a hill. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we have the Brown Act. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is our presentation, and I would like to have Director Public Works Chuck Chris join me at the podium to accept a proclamation declaring May 21st, 2017 through May 27th, 2017 to be Public Works Week in the City of Vista. So if you'll meet me down here, that would be good. There? I just want to turn it pretty side out. There's this, and I'll read it here. So, "Whereas 2017 marks the 57th annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas public work services such as sewer maintenance, storm drain maintenance, park maintenance, tree trimming, graffiti abatement, street repair, and fleet maintenance are an integral part of Vista residents' everyday lives, the health, safety, and comfort of our community greatly depends on these services. Whereas the support of the city residents and the elected officials is vital to the functioning of the public works operations, and whereas this year's National Public Works Week theme, 'Public Works Connects Us,' represents a reminder of the numerous ways public works contribute to the quality of life of Vista residents while helping strengthen the critical infrastructure serving the community. So now the mayor and members of our city council do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017 as Public Works Week in the City of Vista." And so congratulations on that, and I want to have you say a couple of words maybe for it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm joined this evening with our management analyst, Joshua Sinocruz, and we're here just to represent our department, which is made up of 58 men and women who gladly served the City of Vista. Mayor, Council, and City Manager Johnson were very appreciative of this recognition, this proclamation. We'll be sure to share it with our staff when we get back, and we just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar, items C1 through C10. And in the recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless some item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk-Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And items C7 and C10 have been pulled by the public. And does the council have any items that they want to pull?
Those were my two. Thank you.
Okay, so seeing no other ones, I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a second? Somebody?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Please cast your vote. The balance of the consent calendar passes unanimously with Councilmember Green is absent. He had, is at another meeting and out of town. So we will next go to item C7, which is always stop on Melrose Way at Breeze Hill Elementary Entrance driveway.
And would you like a presentation on this?
Do you like a presentation? Yes, I think because the public pulled it, so.
With us, we have our city engineer, Greg Mayer, and our traffic engineer, Sam Hassanin.
Good evening. It's the always stop at Melrose Way, Breeze Hill Elementary Entrance driveway. So the background, and this is the city received a complaint expressing concern with difficulty for pedestrians crossing Melrose Way in front of Breeze Hill Elementary, and the citizen requested the installation of an always stop control on Melrose Way at the school driveway, entrance driveway, which is something that was previously proposed in the Vista Master Seafrost School Plan, which is attached to the agenda report. There's also been a history of complaints about traffic flow and pedestrian crossing on Melrose Way in front of the school. So over the past couple of years, few years, we developed the Seafrost School Plan, which looked at the issues more comprehensively in front of the school and came up with the solutions. And based on the analysis of the traffic issues and engaging the parents and school administration, the plan proposed the installation of the always stop and a marked crosswalk on Melrose Way at the school driveway. So this is kind of an overall view of what the proposal looks like. This is the entrance school driveway there, and shows two marked crosswalks, one across Melrose Way and one across the school driveway, as well as a stop sign. The proposal would also include a strip in second lane going westbound on Melrose Way towards the school driveway. So to get the crosswalk and the stop sign in, that required installation of a short segment of sidewalk on the south side of Melrose Way, because currently there's a gap in the sidewalk from, as you go from South Melrose Drive to the school driveway. So this work was just completed a few weeks ago, and there was a little bit of a widening also that was done with the sidewalk. So as I mentioned, when we looked at that exhibit, the widening will allow for the strafing of the second lane in the westbound direction approaching the school entrance. And one of the big issues that we've had over the years is congestion when the schools start in or releasing, traffic is queuing up to get, make a right turn into the school driveway, which completely blocked the westbound movement. So the second lane would allow the through traffic that has not turned into the school to keep going. So the Seafrost School Plan conducted a count, which found a total of 151 pedestrians crossing Melrose Way in front of the school during a 30-minute period at school release. And the pedestrians, generally, all of them, I would say, they cross somewhere between South Melrose Drive and the school driveway, not at the signal at South Melrose. And they cross, there's traffic queuing up in the westbound direction, traffic is moving in the eastbound direction, and the pedestrians just cross in between the stop traffic as well as the move in traffic. So the recommendation is to establish an always stop control on Melrose Way at Breeze Hill Elementary Entrance driveway by installing stop signs on Melrose Way. Now, this is kind of another overall exhibit of the area, and that shows the stop signs that are being proposed on Melrose Way.
Okay, I have, I have two speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first, everyone? Okay, Mark Abbott. You have to go to the microphone, please. No, on the other side. Sir, you need to face us.
Okay, I saw the microphone.
Yeah, pull the microphone, just pull it back. That was, that was my bad. I should have put it back for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
This exhibit does not show sidewalks on the south side. We actually did the sidewalks in two segments, so from South Melrose Drive to the church driveway, we did that about a year ago, and then we continued the sidewalk in the south side to the school driveway.
So that picture's not current right there?
Does not show the sidewalks in the south.
Because the sidewalk should go all the way then. And what, I think they've done a great job. They, we know, we're moving forward. I just don't think it's going to be enough. I think that the sidewalk should actually continue to Sentinel, the next street. There's another sidewalk that actually ends at 1140 Melrose Way. I lived at 1128 Melrose Way for 20 years now, almost, 19 years. And it's, Melrose Way is a narrow street. It should be 25 miles an hour. This is a business here, and it should be 25 all the time. It's 35, as Vell Terrace is 35, but there's really a wide, wide street there at Vell Terrace, and it's double sidewalks and really nice. And Melrose Way is really narrow, and you have all the children walking around after school. If they decide to cross there, that crosswalk, and then walk west, they're going to be walking on unpaved, uneven surfaces, or even on the street, and it could cause further danger. So I think they're opening up, I mean, if people do decide to walk the other way, it could be a hazard for the children crossing and then going the other way. And there is a lot of bad traffic and speeders on our street, and I just think that they should put, consider trying to ford the sidewalk all the way to, the sidewalk where it ends further down at Sentinel. I think, am I saying the name of that street right?
Centennial.
Centennial, yes.
Okay.
So it is Centennial. There is a sidewalk down there, and it's just right after 1140. And if they do the sidewalk the whole length, if people do decide to walk that way, or even cross, because parents not only park on Melrose, but they also park on the other west end of the school, crossing the street down there as well. So you have a crossing hazard down at the other side as well.
I don't think we're going to put sidewalks. I think we're just talking about a crosswalk today.
Right, but they already put the sidewalks in. So I'm just saying they need, they probably should continue the sidewalks, and that way that will take care of anybody that do, you're putting in a crosswalk that could be opening up hazards if people decide to wander the other direction. And then the church are, I don't know if there's anybody here from the church to represent, but if people are cutting through their church parking lot and somebody twists their ankle, who's going to be liable for, for that? If they don't use the sidewalk all the way to the corner and they cut through the church, they're, I hope they don't go suing the church. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is James Cooley.
Good evening. I agree with Sam. He's done an excellent job on this proposal. I fully support it. I live at Branding Iron Circle, and I walk three children to Breeze Hill. And Branding Iron Circle is south of the school, this location. So there's no crossing guard at the main intersection. All right? It's not funded. So we got to fight against drivers making illegal turns, running us over, pulling out into the crosswalk, many, many issues. They've been reported. My wife's called Sheriff's Department, and nobody's shown up. All right? We've even had one, one parent that literally got out of her vehicle and wanted to challenge my wife over us, her having the right of way in the crosswalk. So many issues here. The church has given the parents permission to park there, and that was addressed in the Traffic Commission meeting we just had. So if we had added a crosswalk in that, the north to south, would make it much safer for my family, many families that park at the church. And it's not only young parents, there's a lot of senior people, grandparents, that are trying to access the school with children. So it's, it's a huge issue. I've spoke to the principal, the school district agrees with it, with, you know, this, this proposal. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much my two cents. I appreciate it, and I fully support Sam's proposal here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and speaking with us. So Councilmember Aguilera.
Just wanted to know, when you do a stop sign like this, do you try to determine, I mean, I obviously are trying to determine the effects of the traffic, but have you looked at the, how far the cars would be backed up onto Melrose Drive? If at all?
Outside of the school peak, the volumes are pretty low, so that should not be an impact.
Right, I'm talking about during school.
It already backs up around the corner on South Melrose, making that right turn into the school.
Right now?
It does.
Okay. And what do we have there? Four lanes?
On South Melrose?
Yeah.
Two, yeah, four lanes total, two southbound. And then we have a wide bike lane with a parking lane, and that's where the right turns queue up, so they're not in the through lanes.
Okay, so stop sign is obviously not going to help that at all, right?
No. If anything, it would remain the congestion level, or the queue would remain the same, probably would be a little bit longer.
Okay.
But we are striving a through lane on Melrose Way for the through traffic to go by, pass the queue.
Right. Yeah, I'm very familiar with this road. Okay, I think that's all I got. I would definitely, you know, at some point in the future, and I know that's not what we're discussing tonight, but some point in the future, I would like to see the sidewalk extended. You know, I think that would be a good thing. We've done that at other areas of town, and I think that this would be a good area to do that as well, especially we got that new project coming up just above this. So there'll be families walking, I'm sure, to school, so. I, you know, I think if staff thinks this is good, I'm, I'm in support of it.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report. Just a couple of questions. When you said that there had been many complaints, can you qualify that with a number or ballpark number? You said there was a history of complaints?
Let's say over, let's say like last five or six years, maybe five or six.
Okay. So five or six complaints over five years. Okay. The other question I have for you are, we've done some modifications in other school areas, and unfortunately, we still see people darting in between cars, avoiding the crosswalk, avoiding walking to the corner to the light. And sadly, at the elementary schools, I see this all the time, where parents are dragging their little kids in between cars, and it translates into the modeled behavior that our junior high and high school kids are doing, where they're running between cars, especially out on Melrose by Rancho Buena Vista. And so that's very distressing to me, that we have parents who so easily discount rules of the road and, and put themselves and their children in danger. And I don't know that this is going to help that. They're just going to continue to run across the street wherever they want to. And I have faith, I have faith in you that if you think this will do anything, okay? But my question is, this is a stop sign on a, on a road, and I live in that neighborhood, and I don't want to see a stop sign there that we have to stop at 24/7 when school is not in session. And also, as was brought up, the speed limit there is 35, and it really should be 25, especially because it's a school zone. And I wanted to know two things. Can we reduce the speed there to 25 miles per hour and repost it to 25? And is there a way, like we have around some of our other schools, like over around the corner on, on Lake by Madison, where the lights are flashing, and it says, you know, speed limit is 25 when children are present? I have never seen a stop sign with a modification, but is it doable so that we're not still stopping at that stop sign at 1:00 in the morning, or over summer break, or winter break, or something like that? Is that doable?
With stop signs, I would be very hesitant to do that. I think stop signs should be full-time. Now, that's, you know, the drawback of that, obviously, but that's the most cost-effective proposal. Obviously, we could, you know, a signal would be an option, but that would, you know, be major cost.
When you were talking with the administration, because the staff report says that you met with school staff, did you talk about crossing guards? Are there crossing guards there where you could have somebody out there, like they do in other locations, with the stop sign and the, the flashing light, and cross the kids and the parents across without putting a permanent stop sign there? Has that been tried?
They do have a person that stands at that driveway to sort of organize the traffic flow, but it would, it would not be effective to have one or even two people trying to stop all the traffic flows and regulate, you know, pedestrian movements. So if some, a device is needed, basically, and then possibly would be supplemented with a, you know, a person standing there, but, but some kind of right-of-way control is needed to have the pedestrians sort of, you know, give them the opportunity to cross with all the, you know, the traffic flow stopped. And just to kind of, just a point about channelizing, channelizing the pedestrians, I think this will, will be very effective. You know, maybe not everybody will use it, but the natural point where the pedestrians come in and out of the school is right there at that driveway. The sidewalk is.
I've been there many times at that time of day, so I understand.
So I think it's just right now, they don't have anywhere, so that's, that's why they just cross anywhere, basically along that stretch. But I do think that if we give them that opportunity with a stop sign on a crosswalk, that it will, will be used. And oh, the, the speed limit, it is already posted, speed limit 25 when children are present, and we can consider flashing beacons as a supplement.
Can we make that street at 25?
25, full-time. That would, the survey that we have currently, in accordance with state law, resulted in a 35. Possibly after the stop sign goes in, you know, speeds might go down, so maybe the next time we do a radar survey, it might be lower. So we'll see how that comes out.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, we have one more speaker that came in. Do you want to hear the speaker first? Okay, Richard.
Straight across the street from the school where the cars exit, and it's a nightmare getting out of my driveway in the mornings. About 250 feet from where they want to put a stop sign, there's a crosswalk with a light, sidewalk going right to it. I mean, I mean, I can't get out of my driveways in the morning. People are not, you know, very nice. But I'm trying to figure out what is the logic behind putting a stop sign right there and crossing people right there, creating traffic all the way back down Melrose Way where the tenants can't get out of their driveways? When they can walk, you know, 200 feet to a crosswalk with a signal? Does that make sense to you?
Well, anybody want to answer that? I would just think the stop sign might stop the traffic so that it would cause a break.
It's going to stop it right in front of my driveway.
Over in front of your driveway, okay.
Right, right, all my neighbors, all of us, we're just.
Sam has something to say about it, down over here.
It is congested already, and as I mentioned before, I probably mentioned the westbound direction, eastbound is congested. I mean, there is a 15, 20-minute period where the street is congested, almost gridlock. You know, I don't think the stop sign is going to, it's not going to reduce that for sure, but, but I don't think it's going to make it much different or extend, you know, the time period that the congestion is there. It's still going to be congested, just because of the rush of the number of cars in this concentrated amount of time. But really, this is geared towards the pedestrians more than anything, and, you know, walking to South Melrose is just not the natural path for pedestrians. It's.
It's right there, I mean.
But that's not what they're doing, obviously, you know, from.
Because I got like eight people live up behind me. Do not block driveway.
Sir, you have to have a conversation, if you want something to say, you have to say.
I'm sorry. Yeah. I mean, it's just a nightmare getting out of my driveway. That light changes, it probably lets 20, 30 cars through at a time. That stop sign is going to stop every single car in the morning. That's going to back it up big time.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera has a question for you.
Yeah.
I have a question. Were they proposing the stop signs, you saying, is that your driveway right there?
No, my driveway is, I live right across the street from school where the cars are coming out. 1140 Melrose Way.
Oh, 1140?
Yeah.
So further west.
Right there. And like, it's, it's hard to get out in the mornings as it is, which I deal with, because I know I'm across the street, and there's probably, what, 500, 600 cars comes out of that driveway in the morning? And I mean, it's just a nightmare. And then in the afternoon, coming back too. If, if they start stopping everybody, right there at, at the school entrance, what's going to, I mean, when that light changes, probably 30 cars go through at a time. This is going to stop every single car. It's going to back us up big time. I'm all for child safety 100%. I would put no pedestrian crossing and make them go up to the light and cross like they should. But.
Okay, well, well, take it in consideration. Thank you for, thank you for bringing it forward. Deputy Mayor Franklin.
The first question I was going to ask was, is there a signalized school speed limit? And you're saying it's not signalized right now?
Not a flashing beacon, but the sign is there, yes.
What's, what's one of those flashing beacons cost?
It's about $1,000 each.
Okay.
$1,000, $1,500 each.
I noticed Grapevine, I was there this morning, they had one that actually tells you your speed, tells you if you're going too fast.
Yeah, that's a different type of sign. That's about a $5,000 sign. That's a radar feedback sign.
Right. I mean, I would suggest the flashing beacon for $1,500 if the speeding is an issue. The other question I was going to ask, so looking at this diagram right here, there is not presently a crosswalk crossing Melrose Way at either end of the school, correct?
No, there's not.
Okay. So students are preferring to walk on the side of the street with no sidewalk? And that's?
So, yeah, right now, we have a sidewalk going up to the church driveway, and they do. I mean, they cross pretty much anywhere between the school driveway, where we're showing the crosswalks on this exhibit, to South Melrose, just kind of in between that area. You'll see them like anywhere along there.
The other question that I wanted to ask is, did you consider, what's the thought about a, a yield to pedestrian sign at the crosswalk? I mean, what?
They don't work. That's, I mean, unless it's a positive stop, because we've tried devices like that, like the one on Vell Terrace, for example, you know, with the push buttons and the signs that flash and so on, it really is, it's just, they're not very effective.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
I just wanted to know if there was a representative from the school district here to speak to this? Because I, I can see the, the problem. I just don't know that this is the answer to it. This is going to create other problems. And anyway, so I just wondered if there was somebody here, but nobody's, nobody's speaking out.
So, Council, what is your pleasure here today? You need direction? Yeah, if we, the recommendation is we adopt establishing an always stop on Melrose Way at Breeze Hill and Entrance driveway. That's, that's the staff recommendation, so.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second it for, for. So we have a motion and a second. Any, please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes three to one with one person absent. Okay, moving on, the next thing, our next agenda item is item C10, which is the marijuana opinion polling. And do, you want to report on that? I guess the.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We have Assistant City Manager Ali Zimmerman and our Assistant to the City Manager Tony Winnie with us.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. At the March 14th, 2017 City Council meeting, the City Council discussed the topic of medical marijuana and access for Vista residents. At that time, the consensus of the City Council was to direct staff to prepare a detailed report and bring back a proposal on allowing medical marijuana delivery and a limited number of dispensaries in the city limits, information on state and federal regulatory environment, and public safety and impacts. State, staff will return to the City Council at a later date with the regulatory and public safety related information that you requested. At the April 25th, 2017 City Council meeting, some members of the City Council also expressed the desire to have staff conduct a public opinion poll to help inform their decision-making on medical marijuana access within city limits. Staff is currently informally soliciting proposals from public opinion research firms. Staff is currently informally soliciting proposals from public opinion research firms to conduct a survey of 400 Vista voters or likely voters, which will provide us with a margin of error of plus or minus 4.9% and a 95% level of confidence. The survey will be administered via phone and online and conducted in Spanish as well as English. We estimate the cost of the opinion poll to be approximately $35,000, depending upon the length of the survey, desired margin of error, and number of questions asked of participants. The survey would be completed in approximately four weeks. Funding for this project is not included in the fiscal year 2016-17 operating budget. However, staff has identified sufficient available resources. If the City Council would like city staff to move forward with the survey, staff will analyze the proposals submitted and execute a professional services agreement with a public opinion polling company not to exceed $35,000. That completes my report, and Ms. Zimmerman and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I have speakers. Go with us first, okay? First speaker is Mark Whittard.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you very much for this time. I'd just like to come up and inform you again once on the public safety and services for Vista's, not only for someone of myself with disabilities, but for other people, veterans and seriously ill patients having better safety and services within the city of Vista so that we can travel to get our prescriptions versus going to places like LA and/or Orange County. Plus staying within our city and spending money within our city is something that we would like to do. If there's any questions that you guys could have, for me, I'd love to be able to assist and help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amanda, is it...
Catala. As a voter and resident in Vista, I'd just like to say if I was polled by phone, I would overwhelmingly agree with keeping the dispensaries here in Vista. There's a few things I wanted to talk about. I know that there's been some agreements going back and forth about how many dispensaries to allow, and you've said two. And two is too few. I believe that only having two dispensaries, especially with the proposals to have them on the outskirts of the cities bordering other cities like Oceanside, it's going to place an undue hardship on people like my friend Mark there, who, when he has to travel in the past, he doesn't really like to talk about it, but in the past has been jumped and has been robbed. Anytime he exposes himself to long periods of travel, it opens him up to being vulnerable to predators that like to prey on people like him. And I'd like for him to be able to have access close to where he lives, where he's safe and where he knows people, and not to be chased to the outskirts of the cities in order for these dispensaries to exist. I think that the two dispensary limit will severely impact our most vulnerable patient's ability to access the medical marijuana. And if the city of Vista currently suffers from a 1.7 million structural budget deficit, we're still getting that deficit worse by raiding the compliant medical marijuana dispensaries. And I think instead we can be pragmatic and regulate these dispensaries to provide more services and safety to the city's residents. I also think that our current operating dispensary should not be excluded. Many of the currently operating dispensaries are good members of our community that outfollow all state laws. The exclusion of the currently operating dispensaries in part of this conversation will create a whole new list of problems, which include many of their employees losing good-paying jobs. Some of them currently operating in Vista offer 401ks and health benefits. Some of them locally run dispensaries that provide free medication to terminally ill patients. They run in complete compliance with state laws, and they do their best to give back to the community. So what I would ask of you as a resident and as a voter in Vista is I would ask to raise a proposed cap on storefront locations from two to something more appropriate to meet the needs of the tens of thousands of local patients, to reconsider zones and try to create more accessible access points for local patients, and to allow the currently operating dispensaries to also participate in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Stubner.
Good evening, and good evening to everyone else. My name is Steve, Steve Stubner. I'm a mechanic by trade, and through my hard work, I need medical marijuana to ale my illnesses. And as of recently, I began working for a medicinal dispensary here in Vista. And all I see is good people coming in, good people going out, lots of good faces, nice people, elderly, sick, poor. The people that are treated to that need a little extra help are definitely treated to. No one is outside of their limits or going against any laws that are any different from 95 with Prop 215 and now Prop 64 now. I would like to say that I am here for the people that cannot speak, the people that are not here, the elderly, the sick, the poor that cannot show up tonight. And I would also like to say that marijuana itself is a gift for all the people here, both in Vista and in California and in the United States. It's something that we can, if we're worried about money, we can definitely take that as a good source, almost another gold rush, if you may think of it, then that way, please. To take hard-earned taxpayer money to raid these establishments that do not cause any ill will to the people is absolutely absurd. And I think the proposition of having only two dispensaries for the entire city is another absurd statement. To me, I believe monopolization of this product could bring future problems, not maybe foreseen in the next two, three, five, 10 years, but in the next 20, 30 years, if this product was monopolized, we won't, the people would lose their right to both afford it or get it on their own terms. I believe that if we keep strangling safe access to these only certain locations, we will only give the money back to the thugs and the underground world, that we are trying to pull it out from the grassroots movement of that medical marijuana and recreational. I believe truthfully more in the medicinal side of things with all the people I do see. And I think that through proper education, both through using the money, taxpayer money, and the taxes from this lovely resource that we have upon us right now, that we could definitely get ahead and afford anything we want for our children in the future. For now, any roadways you think may be safe, any of that needs to be fixed, this would pay for it, we're sitting on it. If we go ahead and make sure that we get the money, the people get the money, and not the thugs get the money, the grassroots movement will continue. And I think we'll all be better off with a, just a general good idea that we're all hard-working citizens and that the money can go to a good place. Thank you for having me here, and I love coming by to see you. Once again, I'm Steve. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Karina Contreras.
Hello, and I hope everybody's having a good evening. I don't know if I'm just feeling exceptionally smart today, but, you know, we're trying to pull hairs here to get some flashing lights for a safety crosswalk or, you know, indicating that children are present and people need to slow down by Breeze Hill Elementary. But the staff was able to find sufficient resources to fund an absurd poll. $35,000, I mean, that's, that just seems fiscally irresponsible. I really do not understand why a poll is even necessary. I've been to a lot of these meetings where medical marijuana has been discussed, and overwhelmingly, people are for it. And there's many different reasons. What we've seen here with people's testimonies in the council meetings before and today is that patients need access. Hearing that there are only going to be two dispensaries, one, I mean, that just seems like it's going to cut, you know, an economic engine that Vista has. The other, the other point of that is, how can we expect to tell our citizens that we're providing them with safe access when we only have two dispensaries? I don't know if any of you have ever been inside a dispensary, but it gets really crowded. So having two is not going to work out. People have medical emergencies and they absolutely need access to CBD, to different strains of medical marijuana. There's an industry for a reason. Vista is blessed with having agricultural land, manufacturing in the business park, having storefronts already operating at legal capacity according to the state. So I really don't see why there's this unnecessary pushback from, from the city to really foster this, this economic engine. I mean, I really can't say it enough. I just do not agree with wasting $35,000 on an opinion poll. I don't know if anyone can answer, you know, why they think that's a good idea. I would, I would love to hear that. The other thing that I want to bring up when we're talking about fiscal responsibility is something that has already been spoken to, and I just want to reiterate, is the raids that are happening. I want to know what's going on with the medical records that are taken. I mean, all this is just, it's really unnecessary. So I would like to see the $35,000 applied to something that, something else that we really need.
Thank you. Jacinto Barajas? Did I say that right?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. So pretty much I just wanted to touch up a couple of points regarding this issue. I pretty much wanted to say that I do believe that medicinal marijuana dispensaries could actually benefit not only the people that pretty much do really do actually need it for medicinal purposes, that might not have any other choice in the matter, pretty much don't want to take Big Pharma drugs, don't want to go through other more dangerous procedures where pretty much medicinal marijuana would actually be able to help them in that. But also, would it be able to also benefit the city, would actually be able to bring income to the city, and that would actually in turn help us to create better communities, better pretty much neighborhoods, where people actually live in the city as well. I did also want to state that, like everybody else was saying, I do believe that two dispensaries is way too few. They would actually get really crowded, there would be a very big issue with parking, there would be a very big issue with people gaining access to it and sufficient enough of a time without having to spend hours there in line just waiting, where they would be able to pretty much get in there, be able to pretty much wear whatever they need in a faster, more efficient process. I did also want to say, sorry, just that pretty much, it would just benefit the city in a great deal, you know, there's really a lot of people that pretty much would actually benefit from being able to get safe access to it. A lot of people do actually need it, and that number is only growing and growing, and it's just a much better alternative. One of the biggest issues I would say is that if we can actually find a very good middle ground where we can set up very good regulations, good laws, we can actually be able to do it in a safe manner. If we can actually do it for something like alcohol, which pretty much has no, like medicinal benefit at all, why can't we do it for something like marijuana, which actually has been shown to actually have a lot of benefits for the people that actually do use it? That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other speaker Larry is, Larry, is it Liebler? I'm probably not pronouncing your last name. L-I-E?
Larry.
Sorry, I kept reading the writing here.
I'm reading it, not reading it.
Say, what is it again? Tell me what it is.
Little, Larry Little.
Oh, Little?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, Larry.
No, no problem.
Okay.
I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out. Long story short, marijuana, I mean, it's a plant. I mean, there's, there's no, the dangers that we put into other things like medicine, the other guy was saying alcohol, all of those things are legal, we can get them, no problem. But the access to marijuana is very limited, even now, you know, with the laws that we have in place and the, I guess you'd say freedoms that we have of it at this moment. It's still hard. And to cut the city down to two dispensaries, I mean, that don't even make sense. I mean, economically or common sense factor, because people are going to get the product. I mean, I'm just going to be honest, I am that guy, just being real, just being honest. People are going to get the product. Now, you can get on board, or you can not and miss the ship. I mean, I don't mean to be so abrupt, but somebody has to be. Somebody has to open people's eyes to what this really is. Percocets, Darvocet. I could keep going, you know? Those are opioids. That's opium. I'm not stupid. America grows opium fields in America. It's not fair. You know, I'm not going to beat around the bush, not going to sit here and waste your time. I'm not going, oh, well, it's me. It's a product. Actually, it's not even a product, it's a plant. It's a medicine, always has been. And every one of you I know goes to church, and I could go that route, but I'm not. But I think you guys see where I'm going with this factor. It's a product that has always been around, it has always been used in some form and in some way. And someone said a new gold rush or something like that? Yeah, maybe so, but the true point, the true matter in this is awareness and taking away that demon that has been put towards, because it has always been a demon towards this plant. This plant used to be embraced and considered, you know, a necessity factor. And throughout the years, and because of its need or not need, it's been exiled, you know? And because of that, all the medical circumstance that we could know, we don't even know, because we didn't take that time that could have been took to study it. And we're just now realizing what this plant is capable of, and we're just now putting the true effort into it, and we're behind. And the more people keep stagnating the circumstances by two dispensaries in a city or telling people that they can't have the medicines that they need because they don't want to take Percocets, and when they can't get the Percocets, they hurt even worse.
I need you to wrap up, if you could.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's just, it's personal to me because I'm that guy, I got diabetic neuropathy, and I used to take Percocets like cra, I'm a big guy, so you know, the medicine, you know, my tolerance is high.
I really need you to, I'm speaking over here.
Yes, ma'am.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay.
Okay? Last word.
Long story short, the products need it, the plants need it, however you see it. And to not give access would, would create a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys for hearing me out. I apologize for taking too much time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Sarah Lawyer.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I just kind of wanted to get back on the topic of why we're doing an opinion poll, and I don't think I'm understanding, after the state has approved Prop 215, after recently Prop 64 overwhelmingly, that now the city wants to spend 25,000, 35,000 to poll 400 people to find out. I just kind of want to know what they're looking for, what kind of information to keep medical marijuana dispensaries here in the city of Vista. I'm a native San Diegan, longtime resident of Vista, North County, San Diego State Business graduate, 30 years in retail management, I own my own business, and yes, for chronic pain, I have chosen medical marijuana. I no longer want to take the opioids. They caused internal bleeding, significant bleeding. They didn't help the pain. This is a resource that I think needs to be accessible to people. I have many friends that are afraid to come out. It's one of those things that still the federal government, of course, deems it to not be a useful drug, and I differ with that. And I think more research needs to be done, and I think that the people of California have spoken, and I think we need to have the access here in Vista. I can go to San Diego, I could go to Orange County, I prefer to be here in Vista. The people that I see in the dispensary, when I go once a month maybe, most of them are elderly, they're older, maybe my age and older, but they're not what you would consider someone in the back of a 7-Eleven doing a drug deal. These are people that are using medical marijuana for their needs, and it is helping them, and I can speak to that. Oxycontin, oxycodone, Percocets, Vicodins, none of that helped, it made me very ill, made me not be able to live my life, be productive, and be a citizen, and be here to try to engage in this process. So I just kind of wanna know why we're going the route of spending more money when I know we're researching it and the safety and everything else. I spend a lot of time with Safe Access for Americans online, looking at all their research, and I just kinda wanna, I just don't know that the 35,000 is best spent getting an opinion poll, and I think our, the voters have already voted on that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of our speakers, so I'll put it to Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we, when this was brought up at our last council meeting, from Councilman Green to have this discussion or to, to bring it up, I had asked for it to be a discussion, so I'm, I was a little disappointed to see it on consent calendar, 'cause it's hard to have a discussion unless you pull it. But I am opposed to having an opinion poll and paying 35, upwards of $35,000 of city money on an opinion poll, for a couple of reasons. First of all, I think it's a little bit premature to be putting out there to do a, a poll about this, when some of the information that we had wanted to know about, because we can't, we can't forget that it's still illegal in this country, marijuana is against the law. And even if we had, you know, all 93,000 or 98,000 people say, "Yeah, let's do this," as a city, we still have things that we have to take into account as to what, if any jeopardy, we come into by doing this, as far as the federal government goes. And the new administration has indicated that that is something that they're going to address. And so I think until we have all of the information about what's coming at us on the federal government, and then, I was at a meeting a couple of weeks ago where it was reported to us that because of Prop 64, where recreational marijuana was approved, the state legislature is floating some bills and some verbiage to, to unwind all of the medical marijuana rules, because recreational marijuana is, is going to be available here in a few months, I think it's January of 18. So we have a lot of things that we have to take into consideration to protect the city and to protect the residents of the city. And one of the, the big concerns for me, and I've said this before, is until the federal government changes, changes the classification for it, we still have a lot of people in the city with a lot of cash, and we have a lot of public safety problems with that. And as a council member, that's one of my big concerns, is the public safety of my citizens and my residents. So aside from the other issues about the entire issue of, of medical marijuana on the federal level, the state level, et cetera, and the public safety issue, we're still waiting to get information, that staff has already said that they're still working on and will get to us as far as all of these other questions that we have asked previously. So I think having an opinion poll at this point is premature, and I'm not in favor of spending upwards of $35,000 to do an opinion poll, certainly not at this time. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
In our numerous conversations about this subject, it had seemed to me that it had become obvious that the, uh, council, believing that a initiative was a possibility, desired to have an alternative policy, and it even seemed to me that there at one point may have even been a majority for imposing regulations to allow limited retail cell of marijuana in Vista. I, I, I don't know if I'm mistaken about that, but that belief has guided my direction in wanting to pursue the public opinion survey. I'm not presently in favor of legalized retail cells in our city. I promised voters when I ran that I would oppose retail marijuana sales, that was part of my campaign platform, and I, people voted for me because of that. I'm not deaf to the desires of the voters of the city of Vista, and I genuinely desire to know what the attitudes of the public are towards retail sales, and I do not for a single solitary moment suffer the delusion that I have been exposed to a, a wide breadth of public opinion on this issue, or that I have heard from the majority regarding their opinion on this subject. For those reasons, I strongly support the idea of endeavoring in a scientific manner to understand what the view of a majority of the citizens of Vista is. On the issue that I would like to remind all of us is the rightful debate here, we are not engaged in a debate over whether marijuana is a good drug, we are not engaged in a debate over whether it works well or does not work well, whether it should be used or it should not be used, these things are above our poor pay grade. Our job is to simply exercise the people of the city of Vista and their right to regulate what type of retail and commercial establishments have a right to operate in their city. The question over whether it should be prescribed, should not be prescribed, legalized, not legalized, federally legal, not federally legal, is all totally and completely irrelevant to our discussion. So whatever our views on that subject is, absolutely, totally not germane to the conversation about whether or not the people of Vista want us to use their power to regulate retail establishments. The issue of whether or not retail establishments should be located in the city of Vista has not been put before the voters in any tangible terms, and I do not feel that we've had an opportunity to hear from the citizens of our city on their opinions with regard to the establishment and operation of these types of retail operations in our city. So for that reason, and because I do think that we're a council, and I believe earnestly and honestly desires to know what our people and our citizens want, and because I think we all acknowledge that, you know, that the, the public will will be done with or without our voices being heard, as the public have that right, I would like to know what the will of the public is. I think it would be very informative, and I'm, I, I will never be satisfied to hear from just a few people who have self-selected to come and speak to us and convince myself that those individuals represent a majority of 98,000 persons. It's just not mathematically sound statistical analysis. So that is why I support it, I do not think $35,000 is excessive in the slightest degree when determining and helping inform a decision of such enormously consequential measure to the people that we represent. I find this to be a, a wise endeavor for us to study and understand what it is the people that we represent want. And I just had one question of staff, has there been any proposal, 'cause I wasn't aware of it, that was made by any member of the council publicly or by the staff that was offered publicly, that described a number of establishments that would be, I, I, numerous individuals spoke to that issue, and I, I wasn't aware of such a proposal had been officially offered? Have we offered such a proposal?
Deputy Mayor, most of the speakers tonight were referring to the agenda item that was placed on the April 25th council meeting, that was subsequently postponed to a future meeting because we didn't have a full complement of the council there to consider this issue. They're speaking to that report.
That policy that was on the agenda that included the two?
Today's agenda report is specifically narrowly focused on polling, everything else would come back before the council at a future date, whether or not we move forward with polling or otherwise.
Yeah, okay, so that was a part of that, and I didn't catch it, okay. Very good. That is all that I had.
You said that very well, I, I agree with you, so I will move on to Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I guess I, I believe in letting the truth speak, and, you know, a question as to why a poll, and I think we've heard both sides ask why a poll, and I think you just heard the answer from, you're hearing all kinds of opposing views here. This may end up on a ballot, as Councilman Franklin, or Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Franklin mentioned, and, you know, how else do you figure out if something's gonna pass on a, a ballot initiative but do a poll and find out what people really want? So, I, I'm in support of the poll, I don't think it's premature, I think the more information, the better, and if the people let us know that they support medical marijuana, then so be it, and we move forward to allow the access, in my opinion. But if something different comes from that, then I think we have a discussion that needs to be had as well. So I think this is, more information is, is better, and the more informed voters are, and the more informed we are as decision makers, I think the better decisions we'll make for the city, so, thank you.
That's such an important decision. So, so with that, I see nobody else speaking, I need to have, the staff recommendation is to direct staff to fund professional services agreement to conduct public opinion polling on marijuana at a cost of, not to exceed $35,000, so I, I'll make that. Oh, I have more speakers here, Councilmember Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I'd like to second your motion that you were about to make.
Okay, that's, I was gonna make the motion. Councilmember Aguilera.
All right.
Same thing? Oh, I got ahead of you? Okay, whoops. Cast your votes, please. That motion passes three to one with one council member excused. Okay, so moving on on our agenda, public hearing number one, this is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding development code amendments and a master license agreement for the wireless communication facilities. And the public hearing is now open, Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley is going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing to consider new changes to our development code addressing wireless communication facilities. Currently, the city does not have regulations that are specific to wireless communication facilities in our zoning code, we currently use regulations that were approved for satellite antenna dishes and radio transmission towers to regulate those uses, so we're looking to adopt something more specific and up to date. Many changes in federal and state law precipitated this, as well as the need to have our own ordinance. Our, our regulations currently also don't address such installations in the public right-of-way, and so part of the proposal is to include a license agreement for that. So there's three things we're asking for tonight, an ordinance that would regulate wireless facilities on private property that are not considered substantially changed, one that would address wireless communication facilities that fall outside that definition, and I'll cover those two categories, and then a master license agreement form that we would use to regulate such facilities on poles within the right-of-way that are owned by the city. So I'm gonna cover each issue individually and quickly. The first chapter is 1892, which would cover new and substantially changed wireless communication facilities, these are facilities that have fairly extensive changes that would fall outside the protections that they're afforded under federal law. We currently regulate these under the minor and special use permit processes, which are discretionary permits that are considered at the administrative and at the planning commission level. So those that would be subject to a minor use permit or administrative review are those that would be located in preferred locations, which I'll cover, that don't fall under specific exemptions, or those that are completely stealth, and this would be a little bit lesser, lower of review. Then the higher level of review or the special use permit would be subject to the planning commission, and those would be at discouraged locations, which again, I'll cover separately, those are than 500 feet of a residence, a residential property, and those that are unconcealed, and so I'll talk about that separately. We also are gonna have new regulations that cover temporary facilities which would be issued administratively. So within chapter 1892, there are requirements for application materials which cover the standard requirements, as well as items specific to wireless communications, such as radio frequency compliance, acoustical analysis, photosimulations, et cetera. There are procedural requirements that are identified, which require a pre-submital conference with staff and a formal application, and there's details on the decisions, how they're made, noticing findings, conditional approvals and appeals. The site location guidelines that we included in the ordinance include preferred and discouraged locations, and the staff evaluated that and made recommendations based on where we think these types of facilities should be located. So the preferred locations are listed in order of preference here on the screen, I won't go through them all, but the city-owned facilities are the primary control, the city recommends that at the staff level for the purpose of maintaining control as well as the visual issues within the right-of-way. Secondarily would be the Vista Business Park and Industrial Zones, and last is Commercial Zones. Discouraged locations, similarly ordered from most to least discouraged, would be single-family residential zones, our biological preserve overlay, which includes most of the open space areas, the downtown specific plan historic district, and then the remainder of the downtown specific plan area. This is a zoning map which covers the city general plan map. All of the preferred locations would generally be in the right-of-way or on city-owned parcels which are not specific to zoning. The business park and industrial areas are primarily the blue areas located in the southern part of the city, and the commercial zones are the primarily red and purple areas in the central, along the central transportation corridors. Discouraged locations are the single-family residential zones, which are primarily the yellow, and the biological preserve and open space areas, which are primarily the green, and I can get into any more detail on those if you wanna explore those a little further. Within chapter 1892, we also have design standards, again, that are typical for these types of reviews, it focuses on the different types of installations that you'll see, which are freestanding, building-mounted, and right-of-way facilities, and we also include standard conditions to address how those facilities will be operated and maintained. The second chapter that's included is 1894, this is wireless communication facilities that are covered under the federal law, which is the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012. There's a section in that law, section 6409A, which exempts certain wireless installations from discretionary review if they fall within the definition of what's considered a substantial change. So anything that's not a substantial change falls under this law, and they can only be reviewed administratively, and there are specified time periods upon which we have to review and approve those installations. So the federal law lines out what those, quote, substantial changes are, they're listed here. Basically, you can increase the height and the width and the number of equipment cabinets within a certain range, and the staff evaluates all of those applications to see if they fit within that range, and then it's determined whether they fall under this chapter or the more higher level of discretion in chapter 1892. If they fall under this definition of substantial change, and they're not regulated by the other chapter, then there's an administrative process which is fairly quick for our review and approval. These are examples of some of the existing wireless facility installations in the city that could be expanded under the 6409A rule. They include building-mounted facilities, such as the church on the left, facilities mounted to water tanks and other public utilities, such as those on the top and the middle, freestanding facilities at our public park, I believe that's Breeze Hill Park on the bottom left, that's a light pole in a church parking lot on the bottom right, and on the far right is a freestanding faux tree, which is on school district property. There's also a master license agreement form that's included in your packet, this is intended to address wireless facilities on city-owned poles within the public right-of-way. Excuse me. There would be a poll license required for these small cells, it would exclude discretionary review, we would review all of these through the staff, through the master license agreement form, so they would submit their application, it would be reviewed by staff and approved if it meet, if it met all of our criteria. They would pay a poll license processing fee to cover our staff time for those reviews, and an annual license fee to cover the licensing of the facility. This is an example of a small cell that's unconcealed, which you can see, there's a lot of equipment and cables and other appurtenances. lot of equipment and cables and other appurtenances attached to the pole. We'd be looking for more concealed types of facilities, but this is sort of what you could do if there was no review. This is, again, just a close-up of the facilities. It shows the antenna that would typically be located at the top of the pole, as well as all the equipment that serves the antenna. And then, this is a more concealed facility, which is what we'd be looking for with our master license agreement, where the antenna array is concealed within an enclosure at the top of the pole, and all of the supporting equipment is within a box. So, with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt the two ordinances that would establish new regulations for wireless facilities and approval of the master license agreement form. And our consulting attorney that assisted us in preparing this, Trip May, is also available here if the council has any legal questions. That completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby, is that from before, or is that this? Okay, okay. I was unsure if I didn't erase it before.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this report. And you guys have done a really good job on amending this and updating it, because it has been a while. I just had one quick question, though. I read in the staff report about the design guidelines that the towers or the, whatever their equipment is, has to conform with the design guidelines of the area that they're in. Regardless, they can't be taller than the height allowed in that zone. The setback would be the same as allowed in that zone, et cetera. I understood that correctly. So, my question is, and it was on one of your slides, wireless communication facility, Chapter 18.94. Substantial chain is defined by, change as defined by federal law, and towers outside the right-of-way or towers inside the right-of-way, the height 10% or 20 feet. Is that a change of 10% or 20 feet?
That's correct.
So, they still cannot exceed the design guideline for the zone they're in. Is that correct?
I'm going to let Mr. May address that, but I believe it can exceed the height of the zone.
Good evening. I'm Trip May. I'm your outside counsel, and the answer to the question is yes, they can exceed your height limit. The federal law preempts local law. And if you can imagine the substantial change thresholds as an envelope around the existing facility, anywhere within that envelope, they are allowed to make their modifications. So, if they go outside of it, it falls within your discretion. But within it, even if it would violate your zone height limit, it's mandated that you approve that change.
Okay, that's what I was afraid you were going to say. And then, the follow-up on that is, how many times can they do that? How many times can they request that change? So that, you know, another year or two or three down the road, they can go another 20 feet up, and then another 20 feet up, and another 20. Is there a point where we can just really say no? Or are we going to end up, I don't want to end up with a whole lot of things that look like what we have over at the Highway Patrol.
Understood.
You know, you can see that from every part of the city.
There are limits.
Okay.
So, there's a cumulative height limit. So, and that is the height limit that you see up on the slide. So, for a private property site, if they go up 20 feet, if that's the maximum, then below that, they can continue to modify, but they can't go any higher.
Okay.
There are other criteria. So, if they need to replace the facility because it's not structurally sound for the amount of equipment they want to place on it, that then falls into your discretion. If they need to make a change that is so fundamental that it would defeat any concealment element, so you saw like a fake tree, that would then fall back into your discretion. So, there are some more nuanced rules. But in general, there's a limit in height. And then, within that envelope, they can continue to modify, but they can't go any higher.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, you answered my question. So, with that, I would move to close the public hearing and approve staff's recommendations as presented.
I have, and I have one speaker, but okay.
Thank you very much.
So, okay, yeah, but you didn't close the public hearing, so we're going to hear from John Osborne.
Oh, I did, but I'm willing to open it again, because I said I moved to close the public hearing, but we can, we can open that up.
Public hearing's open again. John?
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, and Councilmembers. John Osborne, representing AT&amp;T. Just a couple of comments. We are on the precipice of a new era in wireless telecommunications, and it's far different from what has developed to this point, where we have had large cell sites that cover a two-to-three-mile range. And as we get into this next generation of technology, old 5G, or the fifth generation of technology on the wireless platform, it's the bandwidth that's used for that, that technology requires that these cell sites, although they're much smaller now, they need to be placed much closer to each other. So, to have continuous coverage with that technology, they're going to be, need to be placed about every 300 to 600 feet. So, you're going to need a lot of these things put out there. The good news is that they're relatively small, and they can go on existing infrastructure. So, we got an initial draft of this proposal, and AT&amp;T provided comments. Just seeing that this came up in the council agendas, we haven't had a chance to review this to the extent that the comments that we provided previously have not been incorporated into the wireless ordinances here. We would, we would object to the wireless ordinance being, being passed in that manner. And I guess that's all I can really say at this point. We would like the chance to review the current ordinances as drafted. We did reach out to the city and say that we would welcome a meeting and working together to draft the ordinance, but we didn't have it, we didn't have that meeting. And staff and council has moved forward in preparing what they think is correct. And I have a great deal of respect for Trip May and John and the work they've done. It's very complex, and so, you know, I mean to be up here in a complaining fashion, but rather, we think a collaborative approach from the industry and the city, working together, would be, lead to better outcomes for all of us. So, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, are you, we're good still?
I'm still good.
Okay. Now, do you close the public hearing now?
Yes.
Okay. Did I have a second? Councilmember Aguilera.
Mr. Conley, with this last speaker, this raised some concerns in my mind that we, I mean, I don't want to see any, I guess I don't want to see anything that I just saw in the city of Vista, as far as the ugliness of some of these antennas. So, I know there's more that's being addressed here than just that, but that's, that's my main concern, is, you know, if we're going to have, excuse me, if we're going to have these things every 300 or 600 feet, even more so important that we regulate and, you know, minimize the exposure that, or the look, I guess.
So, Mr. May did address the comments from AT&amp;T. I know he can speak to some of that. I mean, we did review the letter. We did bring the issues forward and discuss them. Frankly, most of what was requested was not accepted, and, you know, we moved forward with some minor changes based on the recommendations from the different providers that we got. But what we're proposing, in our opinion, is the most regulatory control that we can place on these types of facilities within our city, within the framework of the current law. So, we have control over what facilities can go in the right-of-way. We do have to allow them to go in the right-of-way and go on poles and provide their services. We can control the aesthetics and the location of the boxes and that kind of thing. And so, this is what you're going to see. I mean, that's what we're going for versus...
Yeah, no, that's fine. And that's much better than that.
So, that, I mean, but that, that's where the controls are. So, what we, what we're putting into place tonight gives us the ability to get from this to this.
So, we get to control the aesthetics, basically.
We get control over the aesthetics, correct.
All right. With that, I'll second it, then.
Okay. I have no other speakers, and seeing no speakers up here, I guess I will call for the vote. So, please cast your vote. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Green excused. So, moving on, let's see, we're going to move on to our discussion items. Items scheduled for discussion generally require a detailed explanation by the staff or the agency member that's requested the item. And we have three discussion items this evening. The first one, D1, is restoration of the fourth ALS ambulance. And yes, Fire Chief Jeff Hahn is going to introduce that It's on the monitor, he says.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
It worked. I have a staff report on the restoration of the fourth ALS ambulance this evening. In 2007, the Vista Fire Department placed a fourth ALS ambulance in service based on the 2005 Standards of Cover Study. That study identified service gaps related to call volume and response times. In 2011, economic pressure from the Great Recession required the reduction of one ALS ambulance from service, and the department distributed the workload to the three remaining units. Over time, those units have become increasingly busy, with emergency medical services, or EMS, calls increasing by 30% to 40% between 2011 and 2016. In 2011, the department ran 7,900 EMS calls. When measured in July of 2016, for the previous 12 months, two of the three ambulances were beyond recommended utilization standards established in accreditation, and the remaining ambulance is just 0.8% below Can you advance that for me, please? Thank you. The restoration of the fourth ALS ambulance will help to lower the unit-hour utilization of all ambulances in our system and increase ambulance reliability for responses. Staff recommends the restoration of a 24-hour ALS ambulance with two firefighter paramedics per day. This would increase the number of available ALS ambulances from three to four, and the on-duty daily staffing would increase from 25 to 27 personnel. The benefits of doing this include adding depth to ALS resource full-time, and will improve emergency response force times by putting more firefighters on scene of emergencies quicker. It also has the advantage of assigning a unit to an existing engine company at a station to build a more capable company for response, training, and supervision. The slide above shows unit-hour utilization. Unit-hour utilization standards are determined by staffing and unit type. International standards have identified 25% as the recommended maximum utilization for an ALS unit staffed with firefighter paramedics, due to the dual role demands of this model. Exceeding the standard will restrict the staff's ability to train as firefighters and paramedics, perform daily equipment checks, maintenance, paperwork, station duties, physical training, meal breaks, public education, and inspections. The slide above now shows the number of ambulances, number of ambulance calls, and ambulance response times for the agencies that border Vista, including Vista. San Marcos recently added a fourth ambulance, and Oceanside added a fifth late last year. Carlsbad is currently considering adding a fourth ambulance as well. It is notable that Vista is second only to Oceanside in the number of ambulance calls per capita, which helps demonstrate our high call volume and demand for service. We hope to lower the ambulance response times by adding the fourth unit. As discussed previously, automatic aid has been put in place with all jurisdictions that surround Vista and includes the closest unit concept. This concept allows the closest appropriate resource to be sent on an emergency response regardless of jurisdiction. This arrangement has allowed the North Zone departments, including Vista, to serve those calling for service in the quickest and most efficient way possible. This also has maximized the use of resources to a greater degree and extended our ability to answer calls for service without adding resources for a longer period of time. Continuation of this cooperative model, as long as all players provide similar in-kind resources, will provide greater resource depth and allow maximum resource utilization into the future. As the chart indicates, the automatic aid system works extremely well and is closely monitored for overall equity. An example of this is demonstrated below, where the San Marcos Fire Department reacted to an imbalance with Vista and Carlsbad by adding an ambulance near our border that positively impacted the imbalance. In 2016, the department ran over 14,300 calls, that included 5,984 calls involving automatic aid. Over the nearly 6,000 calls of automatic aid, the year ended with only a 45-call difference, which I see is incredibly effective. The costs to restore the fourth ALS ambulance are as follows. $1,116,235 on ongoing costs for personnel, $260,720 in one-time costs for the physical ambulance and equipment, with a total first-year cost of $1,376,955. These costs are currently included in the proposed budget, along with revenue estimates. Let's take a look at revenues, proposed revenues. We had some discussion, a couple meetings ago, about ambulance revenues. We have those on the chart for you. The revenue for the ALS program is based on transport component of the system. Last year in fiscal year 1617, ambulance revenue was $2,990,000. The current fiscal year is on track to produce approximately $3 million. The department has been cautious in recent years estimating revenue with the changes in health care under the Affordable Care Act and their potential impacts on pre-hospital emergency medical services. The situation is, again, facing potential changes that dictate a conservative approach to estimating revenue. It is also difficult to predict the revenue impacts of returning a fourth ambulance to the system due to the number of variables associated with where calls for service will occur. The intent of the fourth ambulance is to decrease the workload on the system and other transporting units in Vista by better distributing calls for service. Inevitably, more calls will be handled that were previously run by automatic aid partners, based on the closest unit and ambulance availability, or reliability. Without knowing where the calls will occur, and at that moment, where the ambulances will be physically located, it is difficult to predict with accuracy how many additional calls Vista ambulances will run. With these variables in mind, the department estimates $290,000 in additional revenue from a fourth ambulance per year. For the fiscal year 1718, the estimate is $194,000, as the unit will not be in service for the complete fiscal year. In addition to increased revenue that will be generated by placing a fourth ambulance into service, there are two other revenue enhancements that staff recommends in order to generate the revenue that will be needed to help offset the increased costs of the Increased ambulance billing fees. The current ambulance billing fees were set by the city council in 2009 and were approved to be increased based on the ambulance inflation factor, or AIF, as set each year by the federal government for Medicare fees. These increases have been applied, but over time, Vista billing rates have slipped behind both zone and regional averages. To provide increased revenues to offset program operating costs, staff recommends that Vista set the rates at the San Diego County average, as noted in the chart above. By adjusting billing fees and restructuring the fees to be more inclusive of materials used on a call by bundling supply charges, a practice that is used in most other jurisdictions in the area, staff expects to increase revenue by $96,000 per year. The second fee issue is to implement a first responder user fee program. A first responder user fee is permitted under Section 13916 of the California Health and Safety Code and is designed to cover costs for first responder paramedic services. First responder fees have become an industry standard to fund the enhanced paramedic level of service provided by engine and truck companies. An increasing number of fire departments are using first responder fee programs to support first response paramedic services. Currently, first responder fee programs are being discussed in the cities of Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, and Oceanside. Discussion has included a formula to calculate fees, which are tied to cost of providing services, which is required by state law. The amount of the first responder user fee is based on an hourly rate for personnel and equipment, as well as associated costs of dispatching. A standard rate has already been calculated by the California Office of Emergency Services, or CALOES, which is based upon each jurisdiction's cost, pay rates, benefits, et cetera, and by the equipment type, all on a per-hour basis. The proposal is to use this to sta- The proposal is to use this established rate and the current per-call dispatch fee to recover program costs. The current rate calculation for the Vista Fire Department with these figures is $154.86 per call. Because prehospital care is considered to be a critical component of the health care system, most medical insurances cover the first responder user fee. It is important to note that the current payer mix in Vista, or the number of insured users versus uninsured or underinsured users, has traditionally been low. Recovery of the fee will be influenced by this mix. The department is making a conservative estimate for a first responder user fee program yielding $90,000 per year to help offset program costs. Specific to the first responder fee program, I've heard some concerns about how this will work. For example, if a person was to crash their car and an engine responds, would they get a bill even if they were uninjured? The answer is no. First responder fees would only be triggered if the first responding paramedic treats a person, and the fee goes to the person's insurance company. In summary, staff recommends the City Council authorize the restoration of the fourth ALS ambulance and direct staff to return in June with specific proposals to adjust ambulance transport fees and institute a first responder fee program. In future reports to council, I can provide statistics and updates on the impacts of the fourth ambulance. This concludes my report, and we'll open to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor Franklin.
You know, I had a question about the first responder fee, but I think you answered it as you progressed through your explanation of it. Given the numbers, and the unit-hour utilization numbers were what I had asked for in our last discussion about this, it does seem clear that we have a compelling need to add the fourth ambulance. And so, I appreciate your work on this, and really appreciate the staff working very hard to find space in the budget to make this work, and I commend not only the members of the Fire Department and the staff, but also the council, because I think this is something that we've wanted to do for a while, and I think it signals our return back to a healthy budget condition, one that we're going to have to work very hard to carefully safeguard, but I think this is important, and I'm very supportive of it.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very good report, thank you. It did address all the questions that I had, and I know that I had kind of let you know what I was going to be looking for and the information that I wanted, and you covered all of those points very well, thank you very much. And I agree with our deputy mayor that it really does make for a compelling argument that we need to have our fourth ambulance back in service. And so, I'm also supportive of this, and so, thank you to you, Chief Hahn, and to I see a lot of our Fire Department here, so thank you all.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the chief and staff, of course, for all the hard work that's been put in, but mostly wanted to also thank the firemen that are here for the service they provide, and for them, you know, fighting to get this. I know they're looking after the community, and it shows. All my questions have been answered over the last couple of weeks. I've got a lot of support from the PAC and staff, as far as getting questions answered, numbers, but I think this report is very good. It's much better than the last attempt we had at this. This is, I think, what we need to see. But again, I do want to thank staff, because I know we've got to figure out how to pay for this, but I think we're going to figure out how to make it work. Our city has grown quite a bit in the last few years, but so has our economy, so I think we'll figure it out and make it work. So, I am in support of this.
I want to thank Chief Hahn also, thank you, and it was a good report. I understood it very well, got my questions answered, and thank you to all the firemen. I appreciate all the things you do every day, all the hard work in putting your lives on the line for us. I very much appreciate you, so thank you for that, and thank you for staff, and so I also support it. So, do you need a motion?
So, if we need a motion, I would like to go ahead and move that we authorize the restoration of the fourth ALS ambulance, and we'll have to discuss options on paying for it, but I would like to move forward with restoration of the ambulance.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes.
Did the city manager have something to say?
Oh, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say, I think we received your direction, but go ahead and vote and solidify it.
That motion passes unanimously, with Councilmember Green excused. Okay, so moving on to our second discussion item, it's our draft fiscal year 2017-18 operating budget, and city manager Patrick Johnson's going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have, we have Assistant City Manager Ali Zimmerman with us, as well as our Senior Management Analyst in Charge of the Budget Laura Johnson, and Laura Johnson will be providing the report to you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The purpose of this discussion item is to review the draft operating budget and receive direction from City Council prior to presenting the final budget on June 13th. Last fall, staff began preparing the operating budget for fiscal year 2017-18, which covers the period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018. Revenue estimates were prepared, and based on available resources, a spending plan has been devised that we feel best meets the needs of the residents and businesses of the city. At the April 11th overview meeting, staff anticipated needing a beginning fund balance of $1.7 million to balance the general fund budget. Based on council's discussion, the budget was reworked to address both eliminating the use of a beginning fund balance and adding a fourth ambulance. Some of the large-dollar items revised to affect this are shown on the slide. Eliminating a beginning fund balance will significantly reduce, as compared to prior fiscal years, ending fund balance available at June 30th. But doing away with this practice is more financially prudent and sets a good model for the long term. The agenda report provided a broad overview of all funds, but especially of the general fund. This presentation will begin with a review of general fund revenue and expense estimates, and will end with a discussion of the six major spending categories. The total operating budget is $130,418,171. It is accounted for in almost 20 funds, most of which are restricted by law as to the type of activity for which the money can be spent. As this slide visually illustrates, unrestricted monies, or general fund monies, which is shown in green, fund the bulk of the city's expenses, including, for example, all of public safety. Restricted monies, or non-general funds, shown in blue, are a major funding source for certain kinds of activities. Most of Public Works, for example, is funded by non-general funds. The first area to be reviewed will be general fund revenues and resources. Page 17 of the budget document provides a summary showing historical data as compared to the proposed 1718 revenues. All revenues are estimated in detail early in the budget process and are evaluated several times before being approved by the city manager. General fund revenues and resources are estimated to be $77,026,244. This includes $7.9 million in new revenue, as shown in the chart on the green line, and an additional $5.1 million from other sources. I'm sorry, I've been corrected. Apparently said the wrong thing. This includes $71.9 million in new revenue. A majority of these revenues come from just a few sources. For example, property taxes at $21.8 million, sales tax at $19.2 million, charges for service are estimated at $12.3 million, and franchise fees are estimated at just over $3.5 million. The remaining general fund revenues are made up of a variety of sources, as shown on the slide. Proposition L half-cent sales taxes are another component of general fund revenue. Proposition L revenue is estimated for 1718 at just under $7.9 million, and will be able to fund $1.2 million of fire salaries through the term of the bonds. The last element of revenue I would like to bring to your attention is the use of reserves. These monies are not part of the city's emergency reserves. These monies were set aside in prior fiscal years and reserved to fund future expense, such as facility improvements, vehicle replacement, and Proposition L debt service. Page 24 provides additional detail. As shown, just under $1 million in general fund reserves will be used this year. This is quite a bit more than the 1617 amount of $250,000, because there are more vehicles, including a fourth ambulance, to be purchased using general fund reserves in 1718. Are there any questions regarding revenue?
Don't see any.
Before we move to discussion of expenses, this slide shows a comparison of general fund revenues to expenditures. As you can see, all the city's sales and property tax categories are needed to fund public safety costs. The next area to review will be estimated expenses. Page 19 of the budget provides a summary showing historical data as compared to the proposed 2017-18 expenses. General fund expenditures are projected to be $67,515,874. An additional $9,500,133 is needed for transfers out to pay debt service and to fund subsidies to non-general fund budgets, including $236,182 to the senior nutrition program, $258,870 to the lighting and landscape maintenance district, and $332,923 to the Wave Water This brings total general fund expenditures to $77,017,007. With funding of $77,026,244 in available revenue and resources, the June 30th, 2018 ending fund balance is projected to be $9,237, though we will continue to refine the budget before the final presentation. Are there any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, moving right on. The remainder of this presentation will look at expenditures. The budget document is broken out to six spending categories.
I do have one quick question. Are we going to be able to come back to the revenue detail?
Absolutely.
So, I think you might have said it, but anyways, I'm looking at my notes here. The, on page 33, the ambulance fees, is that, does that include what we just discussed with the fourth ambulance, or?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the $3 million is accurate then, $3,090,000?
Yes.
I might add, it includes the increased fees, as well as the first responder fee.
There are three components. One is increased revenue from simply adding the fourth ambulance, the proposed increased fee for all the ambulances, as well as the proposed first responder fee.
Okay. And then, I had a question about the Vista Unified School District's law enforcement. So, that money's coming in to us, from them, to pay for sheriff on campuses, I'm assuming?
Correct. It funds 50 percent of the deputies on the high school campuses.
That's all I look for right now. Thank you.
The first page of each section includes a list of goals for the coming year. Individual line-item expenses can be reviewed throughout the budget document. While staff has consistently managed expenditures, there are several areas of expense that the city has limited or no control over, including pension and health care costs, minimum wage increases, prevailing wages, and fuel costs. Vista has always been a lean city. After the pain of the most recent recession, we have worked very hard at maintaining a lean-mean budget while continuing to provide needed services. Since the recession, subsequent budget has been built to avoid budget creep. Tonight, much of what will be discussed in relation to expenses are how the 1718 budget differs from the 1617 budget. Our first category is general government, which provides leadership and administration for the city. The summary of this category can be found on page 66 of the draft operating budget. General government expenses are just under 12 percent of the general fund and total $7.8 million. A part-time assistant city clerk and a full-time program assistant position are being traded out for a full-time assistant city clerk. The large swing that you notice in non-departmental budget unit is because 1617 included $2.1 million budgeted for the purchase of land for a future park at Paula Vista and Natal Way along the Civic Center Drive entrance to the city. The category of general government is entirely accounted for in the general fund. Are there any questions regarding the category of general government?
So, we've eliminated the funds that were going to be set aside to purchase and build that park?
The purchase has been made, and it was simply, the funds were set aside using the year-end fund balance. They were allocated into the non-departmental budget. We have made that property purchase. Funds to build the park will come before you with the CIP budget.
Okay.
A summary of its public safety expenses can be found on page 108. This section includes law enforcement, school safety, and fire services, including emergency medical services. Public safety accounts for just under 66 percent of general fund expenses and totals to $44.4 million. It requires all of the city's tax revenue to fund just this area of expense. The major increase from 1617 is due to the addition of a fourth ambulance and its associated costs, including six firefighter paramedics in the emergency medical services budget unit. In addition to the fourth ambulance, another ambulance and two staff vehicles will be replaced. Are there any questions regarding public safety?
I don't see any.
The summary of community development budget units can be found on page 150. Community development represents 9.8 percent of general fund spending. The 1718 budget includes a planned checkup position in the development services budget unit and an additional right-of-way agent in sewer engineering. As shown by the blue columns in the chart, you can see that non-general fund monies play a more important role in funding expenses in this category. The size of the sewer administration column is a bit daunting, but this budget unit carries the bulk of spending for sewer services, much of which are paid to the Encina Wastewater Authority. There will be three vehicles used by community development replaced. However, total expenses are expected to be less in 1718 than in 1617. In addition to reductions to achieve a balanced budget, this decrease reflects redevelopment, activity shrinking, and the absence of the red light camera program in traffic engineering. Are there any questions regarding community development?
See, I don't see any.
The summary for public works, which is 5 percent of general fund expense, can be found on page 212. As you can see by the blue columns in the chart, a lot of public works funding is coming from non-general fund sources. Total expense for this category is only slightly more than 1 percent higher than the revised 1617 budget. Part of the increase is due to additional gas tax revenue. Over the last few years, gas tax revenue has fallen from a high in 1314 of $3 million to an estimate of less than $2 million for 1617. We were able to increase street maintenance activity for 1718 because of the Road Repair and Accountability Act recently signed by Governor Jerry Brown. This legislation will add approximately $570,000 annually for the next 10 years to give it its full potential. This legislation will add approximately $570,000 annually for the next 10 years to gas tax receipts. Most of this money will likely be used in the CIP budget for road rehabilitation and construction. The delivery of sewer service accounts for about 40% of total expense in this category. You may know that sewer maintenance has decreased and that Buena sanitation maintenance has increased. Expenses shifted from Vista to Buena to more equitably share costs between districts. Are there any questions regarding public works?
Nope.
7.9% of general fund expense is related to recreation and community services. The summary for this area of expense can be found on page 266. Recreation and community service programs will be impacted for years to come because of the governance legislation to increase minimum wage to 15 dollars per hour by the year 2022. A 50 cent increase effective January 1st, 2018 has been budgeted. Even with this burden, almost all recreation and community service budget units are budgeted at less than 1617 levels. The senior nutrition program expense is 14% less after meal preparation was contracted out to third parties in 1617. And the Wave Water Park is down 16% after one-time repairs were made in 1617. Are there any questions regarding recreation and community services?
Don't see any.
The final category of expense, internal services, is summarized on page 302. Internal service budget units exist solely to support and are funded by charges to all other budget units. There's virtually no outside sources of funding. Internal service funds are also budgeted for 2017-18 at less than 1617. Risk management administration is reflective of favorable group insurance rates for 1718. Fleet maintenance, which is managed by Public Works, is responsible for the replacement of 16 non-safety vehicles in 1718. A decrease in information costs is largely due to desktop computer replacement expenses, which occurred in 1617 and are not necessary for 1718. Internal service funds, a non-general fund spending category, totals 13.5 million dollars. Any questions regarding internal services?
No questions.
This ends the presentation, and I thank you for your attention. It's been my pleasure to represent the staff who have prepared the 2017-18 operating budget. Please let us know if you have any questions or comments.
Are there any more questions? Oh, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I just wanted to redouble my comment to the staff, complimenting them for preparing a budget that has eliminated a beginning fund number from the previous year, and therefore represents a totally balanced budget that is really putting us on the right path. And I also want to say thank you to all the staff and to all the department directors, who I know made cuts throughout their departments in order to make that possible. And I recognize that we're really making an effort here, and I'm sure it's difficult to do, and I appreciate the effort. And I also appreciate all of the council and the city's management for pushing in that direction. I'm really proud of where we're at now, with no deficit and being able to restore the ambulance. I mean, we're really moving in the right direction. This is, I think, a monumental thing for us. This shows what a great job that we're doing as a city. So, thank you, everyone.
Anybody else have any comments? Neither of you? No, you don't need a motion on this, it's just discussion item. Okay, well then, thank you so much. Good report.
Thank you.
Looks good. Budget looks good for next year, so thank you. So, our last discussion item will be the fiscal year 2016-17 third quarter financial report, and Finance Director Lauren Worm will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. The fiscal year 2016 to 17 third quarter report serves as a summary and comparison of general fund budget to actual results. It is important to note, significant amounts of cash receipts are not received evenly throughout the year, so we would not expect to be at 75% as of March 31st, the third quarter. General fund revenues and expenses are tracking consistently with budgetary expectations. The report includes 11 proposed operating and capital budget adjustments for the third quarter, as explained in Exhibit 2 on pages 8 and 9 of the Agenda Report. The recommendation is to receive and file the fiscal year 2016 to 17 third quarter financial report and adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 1617 operating and capital project budgets. Available for questions at this time.
Any questions? I see none. Nope, nothing? Okay. Do we need a motion on this one? We need a motion on this one to accept? And, oh, Deputy Mayor?
I'd make a motion to accept the report.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Motion second. Everyone, cast your votes. Yeah, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Green excused. Okay, so we have, next thing is oral communications, and each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters not on our agenda, and our first speaker is Mark Carpenter. Mark not here? No, Mark? Is this another speaker coming down here? Yeah, okay. So, is it? You're up.
I'm up.
Yes. Is it Priest? Priest?
I apologize for being tard. Apparently, this has already come up tonight, but I had duties as a soccer coach for Vista Storm, as well as assistant scoutmaster for Troop 726 here in Vista, and thank you, by the way, for coming to our Eagle Project, or Eagle Cour de Honor the other night. I don't want to ramble, so let me get to my repaired notes that mysteriously fled my I'm here to talk about the polling that you possibly want to do with regards to the marijuana I think it's imperative that you make it very, very clear to those people that marijuana is already available to patients right now, under law, that a doctor can prescribe that to a patient, and they can receive it. What you see, I have three kids that attend schools in the Vista Unified School District, all straight A's, but that doesn't matter. Well, it does matter, but my point being, an individual that's 18 years old can go into a pot shop unlimited amount of times, okay, in a day, unlimited amount of stores, and get marijuana. Now, whether they distribute that to their friends or not, that's up to them. But the problem that you're gonna have with regards to this initiative is, if you acquiesce at all, and just say, "Well, just give them two," rather than letting it go to the ballot, it's gonna go to the ballot. They're gonna pay $4 per head to obtain signatures, right? So I understand, "Well, let's just cut it off and just give them two," but you're gonna lose. They have unlimited resources, right? It'll go to ballot, and you'll lose. So, at the end of the day, people, when you put that information out to the public, you have to be very, very clear that people that need marijuana can get it, okay? And those people that go into, quote-unquote, "a pot shop" to get medicinal marijuana, what normally happens is they will Skype with the physician, okay? That physician has no relationship with that patient whatsoever, okay? They usually have a monetary interest in the pot shop, okay, to dispense that to primarily 18-year-olds. And if you go to other city councils, you'll have students that come up and talk about, "Oh, I had a friend that used to be a good student," meaning relatively good grades, 3.5 or higher, "and they got their card, and they started getting marijuana, and then their grades slipped." And most illegal drug use starts in pre-teen to teenage years, and I guess my point is, there is a way and a mechanism for people to get medicinal marijuana through a doctor if they need to get it, okay? I'm not debating the benefits of medical marijuana. What I'm arguing is, you need to make it really clear to your citizens, because I reside in the city of Oceanside, okay? You've got to make it really clear to the citizens of the city of Vista that what that initiative really means, okay? So I thank you for your time tonight. I just would make it crystal clear, if you do spend the funds for that, those polling numbers that they'd know, you know, A, people can get it, B, what it's really gonna mean. Vista's known for agriculture, okay? I would just plead with you, be known for avocados, okay? And not for something else. And with that, I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, that's our only speaker, last speaker, and so we'll do announcements here. I have mayor comments. We have six new kite sculptures that were installed last Friday around the downtown. I haven't seen them, but I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity. This is the city's ninth exhibit of Kites Over Vista, and the six sculptures will be displayed in downtown through April of 2018. So they'll be there for a while, so if you get a chance, go down there and see the new sculptures. This Saturday, May 13th, oh, we're gonna have my walk with the mayor, and we're gonna meet at Luzduran Park before the Vista Day with a Deputy. Pets are welcome, pets and kids. Meet me at 8:45 to walk and talk, and we'll end up back at the park in time for you to meet Vista's deputies and learn about neighborhood safety. The Day with Deputy runs from 9 to noon, and there's also gonna be, SWAT will be there, and patrol vehicles on display, as well as a bounce house for the kids. And there's details online at cityavista.com. And last, one of the most popular tribute concerts comes to the Moonlight Amphitheater this Saturday night, May 13th. It's Abba Mania, the Abba Tribute. This two-hour concert features all of the band's biggest hits, so everybody can sing along, and the ticket information is online at moonlightstage.com. So, those are my comments. So, and just to say, I had a great vacation. It's hard to come back. I had lots of mail to go through and things to catch up on, but great vacation with my family in Puerto Vallarta, so it was nice. So, I'll go on down, Councilmember Aguilera? No? Councilmember Rigby?
Welcome back.
Thank you. Nothing? Okay. Well, oh, forgot about Patrick. City manager, please.
Couple items for the public. We're going through the district election process right now. We've had three public hearings, and there's gonna be two more prior to the June 13th meeting of the city council. The two public hearings that are additional are gonna be on May 18th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, and then May 30th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. They're outside of our normal typical council meeting dates, and so we invite the Vista residents to participate in those. Vista residents can also go to drawvista.org and process their maps, and if anybody out there has, doesn't have access to a computer, they're more than welcome to come to City Hall. They can come to the second floor and meet with our city clerk, Kathy Valdez, or her staff, which can help them process that, as well as scan the map that the resident chooses, and send that on to our demographer for it to be processed. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows the future dates, as well as the process to be able to partake in it. The last item is its National Bike to Work Day on Thursday, May 18th, which is promoting riding a bike as an alternative choice to driving, and if anybody's interested in finding out more about that, you can go to icommuteSD.com for more information.
Is that the same day, May 18th, the same day as our thing at night?
It is. It's a Thursday.
We could bike to our meeting for districting meeting. That would be interesting. Yes, in May. Okay, so with that, we are adjourned.